Certainly want to welcome everybody. Thank you for being here today. As noted, no motions or formal action can be taken during the committee of the whole session. I do want to remind everyone that because this is a public meeting, we ask that all members of the audience please remain quiet and refrain from speaking, interrupting, or otherwise disrupting the meeting. Also, I remind everyone to please silence all electronic devices. Madam Clerk, would you please conduct roll call?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Forbes.
President.
Councilmember Bryant.
Present.
Councilmember Bench.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Moore.
Present.
Councilmember Scherzer.
Present.
Councilmember Millen.
Present.
Councilmember Balls.
Present.
Councilmember Ostache.
Present.
Madam Clock.
Here.
Nine members present, zero absent.
Okay, next item.
Public input. We have no one that signed up for the committee of the whole meeting, so we will move on to miscellaneous business. We have one item. It's the discussion of C-7 Committee and other council matters.
Thank you. At this time, to recap, some of you may recall at our last regular scheduled meeting, Councilmember Bench asked the purpose of the C-7 Committee because there appeared to be some confusion on that. And there's also a question of the liaison committee by some members who weren't too familiar with the liaison committee. My intent at this moment is to address the initial question from Councilmember Bench about the purpose and the genesis of the C-7 Committee. And it's going to start with the fact that in my 2018 State of the City address, and I'm going to read what I have prepared because I think that's the easiest and most concise. All right? A key point I made at that time was the need for all educational stakeholders to develop a talent pipeline between all available educational opportunities and the rapidly changing needs of employers in the 21st century. It will be mentioned again in my upcoming 2020 address. A number of these educational stakeholders were not part of the city, county, and school liaison committee, which to me seemed to have lost its way, as it had not, as it had had only six meetings since 2014, when it was supposed to be meeting every two months initially, then quarterly. In March of 2019, after the State of the City address, I discussed this idea of developing and gathering all educational stakeholders together to see what might be done collaboratively to develop that talent pipeline. I discussed it with County Chairman Webster, who agreed it was worth pursuing. Sometime later, I met with the city manager and Mayor Pro Tem to discuss the liaison committee's lack of activity and the idea for a broader collaborative among all stakeholders. Unfortunately, Councilwoman Bench, who was with myself and Mayor Pro Tem Moore, were the city's representatives on the city-county-school liaison committee, was unable to attend. So the three of us discussed the liaison committee's lack of activity and the question of its effectiveness, and the idea of gathering instead all educational stakeholders together to explore a broader collaborative. We agreed that I should contact the school board president, County Chair Webster, and representatives of Delta, Saginaw Valley, the ISD, and Saginaw Promise to ask if they were interested in such an initiative. I did so, and every one of them, including the school board president and County Chair Webster, agreed that it was a good idea. Chairman Webster and the school board president further acknowledged that the liaison committee seemed to have lost its way. The first meeting of all seven representatives, including the school board president and superintendent, occurred in June of 2019. At that meeting, we discussed the need for a broader group of educational stakeholders than the liaison committee to work together to draw families to Saginaw, to map out partnerships, and to maximize educational opportunities for all age groups. At the next four monthly meetings, we discussed how these goals might be accomplished and received presentations on available educational opportunities ranging from the Great Lakes Bay Early College to available scholarship programs to possible partnership opportunities with the city and its developing marketing campaign. The school board president and superintendent attended those meetings without expressing any concerns about the committee's purpose or existence. After the October meeting, I emailed Chairman Webster and the school board president inquiring if they thought the liaison committee might be replaced by the C-7 Committee and requesting they give me their thoughts and that if they agreed, we should take the matter to our respective legislative bodies to discuss going further. Instead, suddenly everything changed with the school board president, and school board members demanded that the liaison committee continue, as has Councilwoman Bench. It certainly can continue. But because C-7 is a broader representative group of cooperative partners working to help the city develop that talent pipeline and opportunity for all, I believe it should continue as well. Both can exist. They're two separate purposes and two separate groupings of stakeholders with different schedules and different purposes, as I said. That is where C-7 came from. And we have to entertain questions, if anyone has any.
I would have one. I just want to be clear for myself on the membership of the C-7. It is both the mayor and the Mayor Pro Tem for the city, the county board chair.
No, that's the liaison committee.
Okay, there's my confusion then.
The C-7 refers to then... The seven are the stakeholders.
Right.
City, county, school district, if they continue, the Saginaw Public School District, the ISD, Delta, Saginaw Valley, and Saginaw Promise. Those are the C-7 stakeholders who were invited to participate. And there was no name originally.
Right.
It was simply to try and look towards a collaborative to develop that talent pipeline I was talking about.
Okay. I had missed one of those, so I didn't have seven. Thank you.
I would like to clarify that as far as I'm aware, I've gone back through my emails. I believe I broached this with you at the time during a private conversation. I was not invited to the initial meeting. I believe you acknowledged that I was not invited to that meeting, or that there was some sort of oversight, and you even apologized to me for that oversight. So I would just like to make sure that that is not misrepresented. I was not invited to that meeting, or was not aware of my invitation to that meeting at a minimum. Otherwise, I would have made every effort to be there.
My understanding was all three liaison committee members were invited. I don't know if Mr. Manager, if you have any different recollection, but that's my understanding.
An attempt was made to invite...
I was not aware, and I would have...
As I said, you were unable to attend, or whatever. I don't know the reason. I only indicated you were unable to attend. Mayor Pro Tem.
It is clear. I did attend that meeting. And C-7, I knew nothing about until I got a phone call. I knew that we talked about the liaison committee, and I said, "What's the purpose?" And then we said, "We'll decide what the purpose is." To me, and it's just my opinion, I think that what really is the bottom line is that there was no communication with the other eight people sitting up here. And for that, people are not... We are upset. And we've talked about it, and you explained it to me. But the rest of the council didn't know about it. And in a leadership role, when you want to be a leader, you need to tell everybody so that we're all in one accord on everything. Now, it's happened, and I know that there's something that we've got to make decisions on. And I called this committee at a whole meeting because what we're not going to do is, we're not going to embarrass ourselves sitting up here in front. It's either we are all in together, because that's how we are. We've been together the whole six years I've been on this. And I'd like to continue to see the work in progress that we've done continue. But it cannot continue when it's a one-sided picture. So, just my personal opinion, had we known from the get-go, we did talk about the liaison committee, you did bring up in your speeches, like you said, that it was going to happen. The problem was, it happened before, you went through six meetings before it even really got to us. And if we're a team, we all need to know from the beginning. And it could have just been a simple, "Listen, we're going to start the C-7." Because I called you to ask you about the C-7, and you explained it to me, and I'm like, "Okay. John Millen, you had a good question. Is Mayor Pro Tem on it?" No, no, no. And if we're going to do a committee, I think that it should be allowed to be the city manager and another council person along with the mayor. So that's where I am with all of it. It's like, all of this could have been avoided, I believe, had we been communicating with each other. And that's something that we've got to work on. We all need to work on talking to each other. I don't mean huddling, getting in groups, because you know we cannot be, five of us cannot be in the same room at one time.
We know how to communicate.
But I mean communicate. If you've got an idea, then that's fine. My other part to the question is, who does make up? So that means that if I wanted to do a group, I could set a group up. I guess I want to go moving forward. I want to get an understanding. Who sets up these groups? Can Andy set up one? Can Claire set up one? Can I set up one? Can Autumn? Or is this a collective body? Because the last time I looked, it said our job was to set policy. It was not to start new groups. I thought that was something, but that's just my thinking. That was a part of the city manager. So I guess that's where I am, Mayor. Like I said, and I've said it to you, so this is no surprise, had people known ahead of time, we would not be where we are right now.
My question was about clarity in the process, and that was why I voted to support having this meeting that we're in right now. Because as Mayor Pro Tem Moore said, you know, what is the process? Because I had brought up corridor commissions and different other ideas that I've had over time, and I think with this council, it would be good to have a clear understanding of how this works. If this has to be something that's voted on by the council, or if one person can unilaterally say that we want to do this, I just wanted to get clarification on moving forward and what this body can do.
Anybody else? Yes.
I would just say that my understanding would be that if it came to be suggested to eliminate the city-school liaison committee, that would come before us, and we would discuss and decide that. That is a standing committee, or commitment then, that we have created. And I do see, I see no problem for both bodies to exist because the one that is the city-school liaison committee always seemed to me focused more on those issues that just concerned those two entities. Some of those are more parochial, like we have concerns about an empty school building and what might be a use for it, or something like that. Where the C-7 Committee is a larger, as you say, involves county and entities that go beyond the county. I mean, the involvement of SVSU is a state university. But it's here, and some of this is to try and address people's outside this room and outside other committee rooms, their perceptions. Many cities across this state and the rest of the country, the schools and the city are very much connected, you know? So it's logical for people to ask a question about schools, and their mayors and councils can address that. But that isn't what ours is. We have here both an ISD and our local school board. So I would just say my opinion is, they are both able to exist, and they address different questions.
Thank you. Now, I want to try and address Councilmember Bryant and Mayor Pro Tem Moore. First of all, this is not a city board or commission, all right? It never was intended to be a city board or a commission. It is what you might call a cross-jurisdictional collaborative. There are others. The ALPAC is such an organization. It's a cross-jurisdictional committee that has been around for years. Our former mayor, Branch, participated with the Department of Justice to create that committee. It is not a board or commission of this council. There is no reason any mayor can't choose to try and create a collaborative with other agencies, stakeholders, whatever the case might be. If there is any need to change a policy, as Councilmember Mill mentioned, to eliminate the liaison relationship, I agree. If there's any initiative or effort to spend money, if there's any effort to commit the city to anything that would bind the city to any obligation, absolutely. But to explore the possibility of a collaborative, to seek information through presentations, that is, I'm sorry, I don't think any mayor can be restricted from doing those things. I'm not sure I would say you are either, but certainly a mayor as the, and I will read from you, the charter, or first of all, the Saginaw City Charter, under Mayor, Section 16. This is an excerpt. "The council shall, at its first regular meeting following the first election under this charter, choose one of its members, mayor, who shall be the official head of the city for all ceremony purposes, ceremonial purposes, for the purposes of military law, and for all other purposes required by law." Now, that's a key phrase. If you look at the Home Rule Cities Act, Section 170.3, mandatory charter provisions, it says, "Each city charter shall provide for all the following: the election of a mayor, who shall be the chief executive officer of the city." It also provides for the chief administrative office of this officer of the city, the city manager. He runs all administrative activities. But the mayor is not simply a figurehead. Whether it's me, one of you, or anyone in the future or in the past, the mayor is not just a figurehead. The mayor has duties and responsibilities to not only every one of you, but to the city, to lead the city. If you think that the mayor has to come for permission to ask you to proceed in any manner or shape or form, then I think you're trying to decapitate your mayor, whether it's me or anybody in the future. You've got to decide, if that's what you want to do, then I guess you can. I think it would be a big mistake, because are each of you going to go out and seek initiatives? It's okay, if you wish to, bring them. But I would hope you would expect your mayor to do those things for you. If not, why have a mayor? Just to do council meetings? You need to think about that. I will, I will. All right. I am addressing the question the way I see it as appropriate. So, I'm not speaking on myself, for myself, I'm speaking for mayors of the city in the future, who has a duty to be responsible to not only the council, but to citizens, and to show initiative. All right. Any questions? Ms. Bench? Councilwoman Bench?
I guess I need further clarification, Ms. Chu. If we are able to seek these initiatives and then utilize the city manager's resources to facilitate those things, so I guess what I'm having some confusion with is, if this is an activity that the council has no say-so over, we don't need to know about it, we're decapitating you if we don't allow you to do it, okay, cool, fine, it's not within our purview, fine. But at what point then does that mean that we don't get to use the city manager's resources? The C-7 meeting I attended, you know, one of our staff members was there. You know, they have to be paid to facilitate the meeting, they have to be paid to do whatever, you know, goes into facilitating the meeting. And I guess what I don't understand is, you know, Councilman Bryant has had several initiatives on his own where he promoted things, we all knew about it, and I don't believe, other than maybe a share or two on the Facebook page, you know, no city manager's resources or no city resources were dedicated to facilitating...
Those are in my pocket.
...these things. So I guess I'm confused as to where that line, how can I, or, you know, there are nine of us, so how can all nine of us do our own little initiatives without any accountability to the rest of the council, but then also get to use whatever city resources we see fit to facilitate it?
I'm not sure. It isn't getting to use, the manager has to make that choice. And if you have a question of whether he made the choice, I think that question is to the manager at this point.
Well, the requests do come in from time to time, from various things for council, and really, the manager's office, we've never really turned anything down. I guess formally, you would like things to be approved by the council as a whole before you use those resources, but I could probably name you several times where that hasn't happened, and we do provide services to other council members, and including other mayors in the past that had projects or initiatives.
Any other questions, Councilwoman?
On the question of use of resources, I would see some parallels between some things where, lacking a better word, somewhere along the way, we achieved a consensus about what we were trying to achieve. I'll just use as an example, our float in the Christmas parade. I don't remember that we had a formal motion to do or not do anything. Some initiative was taken by particular council members, and we achieved what appeared to be our common goal at that time. So I would say that part of it is, to me, not the biggest question, that it's more like, have we had what someone might deem an appropriate level of discussion or interest in a goal? And in this case, I thought we at least had the same level of interest in the goal of the C-7. But as I say, I'm just using one example here. The manager fields more of the requests, I guess, than I would know about.
Councilman Ben Pro Tem?
Once again, I must say, and I must stick to my guns, lack of communication is what's got us here. And I do a many ventures. I'm leaving tonight, going to Washington, and I didn't call no city person to get me stuff together to go. All I'm saying is, is that we're here at this point, moving forward, I would like to see communication. I don't care who the mayor is, I think communication is going to be the key. Now, C-7, I did get an opportunity to sit in one of the meetings. I thought it was real fruitful, but like I talked to Councilman Bench, we now have a goal on how the school liaison should go. We didn't have a direction, and I said that. We didn't have a direction, and let's get a direction. But where we are right now is, is that, I'm speaking for me, communication is the best thing in the world for me. I can comprehend real well. When you say we're going to do something, then, yes, let's do it. But on the other hand, we've got people that are sitting up here that didn't know nothing about nothing that was going on at the last meeting, and they said what's going on. And it's like, it should not be that another member says what's going on. And so for me, a leader is going to inform its people that they're under, this is what we're doing. And I mean, just in passing conversations, and I'm not harping on you, Floyd, I'm saying that for all of us. Because when I asked the council people to help me do something, I asked. And I always explain why we could do it, because it makes sense. C-7, I thought was a good group. But my concern now is, is that we started something, and now that we've started it, is the entity that we really wanted to help going to be involved? Because if the Saginaw Public School System is not going to be involved, I see no need in it. I see no need in going to the next level, because the people who we want to help, I'm not saying they don't want our help, but for whatever reason, we've got to mend some bridges. And so that's what we got to do, the whole body of us. We all got to mend some bridges. Because if we don't, we won't have participation from all C-7, so it can't be C-7, it'd be C-6. So that's where I am, Mayor. You know, like I said, not to harp, I just said it was just a miscommunication that should have been said from after maybe the second meeting and you met. But just to continue to keep going? Come on now.
Councilwoman Bench?
We have our school superintendent and several members of our school board here. And obviously, they're here to pay attention to what our conversation is here at the table. They can't answer, but what is their level of commitment to the C-7 group? And if they are not committed to the C-7 group, which I am understanding their commitment is to the city-county-school liaison meeting, as far as I know, they have expressed the desire to take over facilitating that, to ensure that it continues to happen. I guess what is the C-7 going to be able to accomplish if they are not committed to participating? And what can the C-7 accomplish that the city-school-county liaison committee could not accomplish? You know, the meeting that I was able to attend for the C-7, it was an excellent presentation, and it would have been an excellent presentation to have on the agenda for the city-school liaison committee. A lot of slack, you know, has been thrown at the city-school-county liaison for not having direction. And I agree, when you have three bodies trying to facilitate a meeting that happens quarterly or every other month, it is difficult. It's difficult when that group doesn't have any resources. But I would also add that the mayor has been on that committee the entire time as Mayor Pro Tem, and I think missed an opportunity to incorporate some of his very good ideas for the C-7 Committee into the existing structure that was there. We have a committee that is looking for purpose, that we don't want to see dissolve, and we've got some purposes over here, let's merge those, and let's make that happen. And we could have done that without hurting feelings or, you know, damaging, you know, restraining, you know, good relationships with the school board. So, I mean, obviously, they have an interest in our relationship because they're here. But I'd like to know, what is the indication that you get from them as far as their level of participation here going forward? And again, what good do you hope to accomplish if they are not there at the table?
I cannot speak for the school board. I cannot speak for the superintendent or the president of the school board. I, hear me out. They have to speak to themselves. They have been invited, and they know that. They've been invited to participate in the C-7. Going forward, it's my belief that both can have a very good purpose. The liaison committee can serve to work with the city and the county for the recreational opportunities, for the job opportunities that are available to schools, through the city, through the school, other things along the line where a direct relationship exists. That's primarily what they had done in the past. C-7 is a very much broader group with a much broader agenda of trying to bring all the stakeholders together, and can, yet through cooperation of those groups, be able to bring a lot more to the table than just the city, county, and school district. So saying that they can't serve as they would be the same thing, or be melded together, I don't think that's true. I don't think that would be possible to be effective for the two different purposes of the two different committees. C-7 has this purpose. It will be up to the school board to choose what they choose to do. I hope they participate because they are an important part of moving forward in our city with education. Without them, yes, it would hurt, but there are other educators in the city, and there are other goals and opportunities available for the city to move forward in addition to what the school district is doing on its own. There are other opportunities through the Saginaw Valley, through Delta, through Saginaw Promise to move forward. We need to be together on this. I think everyone understands that, including the school district, and I think they understand that. I hope so. I believe they do. So, anyway, Councilmember Forbes.
Just for the sake of clarity, Councilwoman Bench mentioned the fact that the liaison committee, the leadership of which has been shared between the three bodies. Just so everyone in the audience understands, can you repeat a little bit about who makes up that committee and how the agendas are formed and how the meetings are canceled or not canceled except...
Unfortunately, I think that's been part of the problem. And I think all members, myself, Mayor Pro Tem, Moore, and Councilwoman Bench have been on that committee for years. We're probably the only ones who've been consistently on that committee because of changes and other governing bodies.
That was my other question. That was part of the other question that I had asked at the last meeting, is what was the rotation?
I'll continue. The liaison committee is made up of three members from each of the three entities. One co-chair from each of the three. The co-chairs are responsible for arranging the meetings, scheduling them, finding a place, location, usually at each facility or each school board, city hall, or county building. at each facility or each school board, city hall, or county building. But we're for finding the place, and then having the meeting scheduled, and creating the agenda. That is where it fell down in many instances in the past, because those things didn't happen. And it was very difficult to get nine people, plus any support people that wanted to be there or needed to be there, there, as well as speakers, if there are going to be speakers. It was very difficult, in my opinion, as a longtime member of that committee, to see those things successfully happen and get scheduled. And they didn't. There were only six meetings from December of 2015 through December of this year.
Wow.
Six meetings. So, yes, I don't believe it was very effective. It had lost its way. Can it be effective again? Absolutely. I believe the school board and the superintendent are committed to making it happen. That's good. And I think there'll be a lot that could be accomplished with that liaison committee. That doesn't, that doesn't mean there aren't other groups that can't proceed further and accomplish many things.
So is that to say that the, that the format of the liaison committee is going to be changing to combat the problems that we're facing currently?
It's my understanding the school board superintendent, the superintendent is looking at what they may be able to do to help alleviate that issue.
Okay, I would be supportive of that. I think the, the idea of three, three entities holding ownership over the organization of meetings is very difficult.
It is. And one thing you need to understand, that was never a committee, board, commissioner, committee of this city. It wasn't.
Well, perhaps it's time to formalize.
Well, I'm not sure you formalize that. If the school board is able to take it over, if they're willing to do that, we just appoint members to it, which is very, no different than 911, it's no different than, than a lot of the other things that we serve on. We have people who attend and are, are appointed to those positions. I think that's what would happen here. That would be sufficient.
So, just a comment. I agree that there, that I see two related but different goals of the two, the two groups. I think that much of this could have been avoided with communication, and that is something that we're all learning, and I hope that we will do better as a group in the future.
You, you are, and Councilman Mayor Pro Tem is correct, that was the intent of the, of the email, the communication to Chairman Webster and the board president of the school board, to try and do that. It didn't happen. It got blown out of proportion, and that's why we're here today. Any questions? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
So, move.
No motions in the committee at all.
Then, that's right.
Chairman adjourns meeting.
We are adjourned. Thank you.
We may reset.
Yeah, we'll take a very short recess, five minutes.
Yeah.
Good evening again. We're gonna start our regular city council meeting for today. Please stand. We're gonna start with the prayer and pledge led by Councilmember Milne.
You may join me if you wish. Heavenly Father, guide us in our deliberations this evening. Please help us to govern with wisdom and compassion. Watch over our city and its residents, and keep safe those who labor in their service. Bring us your peace this evening. Help heal those who are in pain today. In this, we ask in your name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Forbes?
Present.
Councilmember Bryant?
Present.
Councilmember Bench?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Moore?
Present.
Councilmember Scherzer?
Present.
Councilmember Milne?
Present.
Councilmember Ball?
Present.
Councilmember Ostache?
Present.
Mayor Clark?
Here.
Nine members present, zero absent.
All right. At this time, I want to remind everyone again that this is a public meeting, so that we ask all members of the conference, please remain quiet and refrain from speaking, interrupting, or otherwise disrupting the meeting. Also, I remind everyone to please silence all electronic devices. If you didn't do it before, please make sure you do it now. Madam Clerk?
Thank you. I have no announcements this evening, so that will take us to public input.
And do we have any today?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you.
Would you like to read the rules?
Oh, yes, I should read the rules.
Thank you.
For public input. Welcome to all those who have signed up to address council tonight. Hearing from the citizens we represent is very important to us. We ask that you speak slowly, clearly, so we don't miss what you have to say. When called to the podium, let us know if you will be speaking solely for yourself or on behalf of a group. All speakers will have a three-minute limit, which is timed by the clerk, so be sure to cover your main points first. We ask that your presentation be courteous and respectful to the members of the public, present to the citizens watching SGTV, and to the council, so we can give serious consideration to your concerns. All follow-ups, we refer to city staff. Thank you.
Our first speaker tonight is Rosalind McNichols. Rosalind, do you want to see her? Let's go with Raymond Tyson, Sr.
Mr. Tyson?
Good evening, counsel.
Good evening. All right. I'm here today to, to talk about the non-occupancy, owner-occupancy. In 2018, you know, the fees was like $50, and in 2019, they went to $75, and they was due in March the 15th. And now, in January, we got a bill, there was like $125, they jumped up $50, and it's due in February, February 28th. So, they due earlier, they $50 more. And the troubling part of that is, is a hundred percent interest. Like, if you don't pay it by February 28th, then it jumps up to $250. And, you know, long sharks don't charge that much money. You know, when I was in the plan, the broke, didn't have no money, it was a long shark in the plan. He charged 25%. And even a credit card's 25%, but a hundred percent interest, I think is, is entirely too much. And people that I have spoke with that own real estate property, you know, they feel, they feel that, you know, I've been in Saginaw all of my life, except for 10 years. I went to Danville, Illinois, and worked and retired and came back because, you know, I'm, I'ma live here in Saginaw, I ain't going no place, and I didn't come down here to fight City Hall. But I come down here to try and work with City Hall, and hope that they would work with, with me and everybody else here. And the other thing is, we didn't have an opportunity to, to have any input on, you know, these charges, you know, or, or, or why they jumped to $50, or, and why they, they due earlier. If a person is struggling and having problems paying, to, to put the bill where it's due faster and double, I just don't think that's a solution to the problem. You know, I would like to see where the public, you know, or the landlords have more input besides just getting a bill. You know, I don't know what the procedure was, or how they went about doing it. I just know, I wasn't informed as to, you know, the methods, or, or what went in the conversation, or how they derived it, you know, the cost or the, the date. But I wish that the council would reconsider that hundred percent interest charge, you know, where, where if you already having trouble, you know, that, that, it just don't help you. You know, it just don't help, you know, a person. So, with that, I, I like some consideration for the council, and maybe reconsidered a hundred percent, well, you know, where it helps everybody. And in the future, you know, I like the, the council to think about or talk about how you can inform, you know, the landlords as to, what it, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Tyson. Your comments, we refer to the city staff for response.
Our next speaker is Sheldon Matthews.
Welcome, Mr. Matthews.
Mayor, Pro Tem mayor, and councilpeople, I come before you guys to tell you thank you for trying to help us with the animal shelter, and trying to give us land to try to make this place better for the city of Saginaw and the community downtown. I came behalf of myself as a, a part of my job, and just wanted to tell you guys, thank you. That meant a lot to me. I wanted it to be in the city, but we don't know yet, but I just wanted to come in front of you guys and say, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner Matthews.
Our next speaker is Shushma Jones.
Ms. Jones, welcome.
Hi. Good evening. I was just coming, just to express that. My name is Shushma Jones, and I'm one of the founders of DNS Transportations, along with my mom, Gordy Jones. And we provide transportation for individuals to get them to and from work. We're located at 4140 State Street in Saginaw, Michigan, 48603, and we provide door-to-door services 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and holidays. We also have a discounted rate for veterans, elderly, and disabled of $5, door-to-door. DNS is also launching a non-emergency medical transportation door-to-door service. We also is able to go 125 mile radius licensed through the state of Michigan. We are forming a partnership with Frankenmove to provide, to provide workers with transportations for Buberry Inn and Frankenmove. And we just hope to have more buses in the future. You know, that's what DNS is. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, our next speaker is Gordy Wilson.
Mr. Wilson, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
It feels a little strange to be in this room and talk about this topic, because it's really, it's really not my topic, but I just felt compelled to come down here and speak about the issue of medical, or not even medical, marijuana dispensaries in the city of Saginaw. It's, it's surreal, because 40 years ago, I was in this room, and I just moved back to Saginaw from Ann Arbor, and I started a pot decriminalization issue to put it on the ballot in Saginaw. And everybody thought it was like about me getting high or something, but all the, all the weed dealers that I knew wouldn't sign the petition. But who did sign the petition was Mayor Henry Nickelberry, who was the mayor of Saginaw at the time, because he understood that it was not about marijuana, just like being here today is not about marijuana. Today, it's about economics. In 1980, it was about illegal police raids that were targeting unfairly citizens of Saginaw. By the way, Saginaw News actually supported in 1981 the initiative to decriminalize marijuana. Marijuana's gonna be, you know, just saying marijuana, it sounds surreal, doesn't it? Like, you know, pot, oh, potheads, they're all Cheech and Chong. No, the people that are using marijuana today are like your age, my age. They're people that have never used marijuana before, and are using it medically now, because it alleviates pain. It's gonna be a $1 billion a year business next year in the state of Michigan. There's a lot of money. I live very near downtown, so I go to the SVRC marketplace, and as I go through, I'm very concerned because there aren't that many people going downtown to shop. There just are not the, the numbers.
Sir, you have to address, you need to be addressing council, not the audience.
Well, that, that's just in my nature. I'm sorry. I'm not doing that to be disrespectful. Anybody that knows me, knows me, that I'm just a...
Hi.
It feels stupid to even be standing here now, honestly, you know, in that moment that I'm just talking to, see, I still wanna turn to citizens. It just feels stupid to me even to be standing here right now to say this, because that's just my nature, is to talk to everybody as co-equals. You represent the citizens. I'm not telling you anything other than what you just were discussing. It seems stupid to me to be coming and talking about economic incentive, and that I would put it right in downtown and right in Old Town. I don't use marijuana, but it's gonna be a billion-dollar-a-year industry. Try to get people to shop. You are a medical hub in the city of Saginaw. You have the hospitals. Do you realize that a lot of the people that are gonna go to those hospitals come from outlined areas, and if you had central lo-
Thank you, sir.
Our next speaker is Darwin Varansky.
Welcome, Mr. Varansky.
Thank you. Mayor Clark, councilmembers, city manager, manager, Mr. Morelles, city staff, good evening. I'm here this evening to encourage support for a millage renewal for Saginaw County Parks. That renewal will appear on the upcoming election ballot on March 10th of this year. The current six-year parks millage is, is expiring this year, and the renewal, renewal of that millage is being proposed for another six-year period. It's important to note that the renewal does not propose an increase in funding. The millage rate being requested on the ballot is the same as the current rate. The proposed millage renewal will generate approximately $1.4 million per year. The cost to taxpayers will vary in relation to property values, but as an example, a house valued at $100,000 would be assessed at a rate of $14.71 per year. And think about that, $14.71 per year. That's somewhat equivalent, equivalent to purchasing a large pizza, or a movie ticket, large popcorn and beverage at the Court Theater, neither of which is going to last for a year. Aside from occasional grants and private donations, the millage revenues represent the sole source of public funding for county parks operations, which include management and maintenance of three, 880 acres of parks facilities, and 25 miles of rail trail, along with an ever-expanding variety of organized programs, activities, and events conducted on site throughout the county and throughout the year. A number of positive outcomes have occurred over the past six years, which can be attributed to the current millage. An example of that is the elimination of entry fees at Immerman and Haythco Parks, which resulted in a significant increase in parks visits and usage. Renewal of the millage will allow the county to continue that practice. Millage revenues have also enabled county park staff to become more proactive in elevating both the quality and accessibility of recreational services throughout the county. They continue to be actively engaged in forging partnerships throughout Saginaw County that enhance recreational opportunities by supporting events, activities, and programs, and through financial contributions and staff assistance that have significantly improved recreational facilities in the city most recently. The improvements on the Jibouay Island, for instance, the pedestrian paths and restroom renovation are examples.
Thank you. There's never enough time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Marsha Buchanan.
Ms. Buchanan, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, and Mayor Pro Tem, and city council members. I really don't wanna be here tonight, but I, and I said that I was gonna submit pictures and documents, but I'm gonna be back, so you'll see them another time. And I was going to respond to the Michigan tax tribunal's order of dismissal. There was a hearing here, and your attorney was here, Amy Lush, along with John Stempel and myself, regarding a special assessment that was charged to me for $18,000 for a home that was demoed in 2012. It adjoined 912 South Washington. That structure was being constructed in 2011, and 215 Holden stood in its way. There were numerous discussions. This has been going ongoing since 2001, has caused me a lot of stress. I would like to get closure. I was told I could appeal it, and it is regarding MOA, MOA, H.R. Docket Number 19-000660. I will be following up. I need help with this matter, so once I get help and talk to the co-owner, as well as the former owner of 215 Holden, then I'll come back to the city council. It was, I believe, an unfair assessment, but I understand and I support economic development, but I do not support people coming in and just thinking they can do whatever they wanna do, and then apparently, and allegedly, getting the support of the city of Saginaw. I appealed- I appealed the demo and I was basically told that the city, it was not the city's problem, but I beg to differ, it is a city problem. I'm very disappointed that this happened, I don't know how it happened, but I do understand it and I do plan on coming back before the city council, but my concern is how this happened and why I'm being charged and I was really powerless to stop it, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Buchanan, your comments were referred to the city staff for response.
Our next speaker is Betty Scott. Betty Scott? Not seen her? Bill Scheiburger.
Welcome, Mr. Scheiburger.
Thank you. Hello, I'm Bill Scheiburger and I live at eleven thirty-seven Howard Street. And by the way, I like being here tonight and good evening, members of the mayor, members of the council, the staff and the citizens of Saginaw that are listening. I don't have any axe to grind with the city. I basically owe my second life to Saginaw, so you won't hear any negative out of me. What I'm here for is to ask for a helping hand with our Stars Millage campaign that will be on March tenth. And by the way, this will be the first time the new laws will be in effect where you can, where there won't be any excuse to apply for an absentee ballot. So, call up the clerk's office and apply for an absentee ballot. We're asking for a millage renewal and, you know, in the last two years, a lot of the, or since the last millage, five years ago, all our fixed bus routes have been restored. We have added twenty-four hour lift bus service, which is like, you can call at nine o'clock in the morning and ask for a ride the next day for five dollars and twenty-five cents. We also have a program that they instituted in June called Rides to Wellness. And this one is a program that will, a person that does not have a ride can call up Stars at nine oh seven four thousand.
My mom, can we have the phone off, please? Thank you.
Thank you. This Ride to Wellness program is a program where you can call for a ride in the city and at no charge to our local tax dollars raised for Stars. Rides to Wellness is a program that you can call for a ride a day in advance, and if you have a doctor you have to see in Bay City, Michigan, they will give you a ride. I think it's fifteen dollars a ride. I don't know if dollar amounts have those memorized, but if you call down to Stars, they'll get you to where you want to go. And this is done without using tax dollars locally. Another program they offer is the Pigeon Express, and that is if you need a job-
Perhaps another fifteen seconds or so, Madam Clerk.
Well, in closing, I'm the treasurer of the Transit for Saginaw campaign and I brought my receipt book, if you want to donate us some cash, or if you want to make out checks to Transit for Saginaw, we're recorded with the county clerk and listed at Huntington Bank. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Scheiburger.
You're welcome.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor, that takes us to remarks of council.
I would remind council members that there is a three-minute limit and today we begin with Councilmember Milne.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For those of you who watch or attend our meetings much, I don't really have much comment tonight. I wanted to thank all our speakers tonight. I did want to especially thank County Commissioner Sheldon Matthews for coming and letting us know our efforts were appreciated. Other than that, I'm gonna pass.
All right, Councilmember Scheser.
Thank you. First and foremost, I want to thank everyone who attended tonight's meeting and those watching at home on SGTV. We truly appreciate the public input and we encourage more people to come back. To Commissioner Matthews, it was very disappointing attending that meeting, but also hopefully starting over, we can get somewhere and still have the possibility and potential of having the animal control facility in the city of Saginaw. It's very important, I think most of us on council can agree, so hopefully there can be a... There's hope, let's just say there's hope. I did also want to say thank you to the city staff for the strategic planning session, it was an amazing day and a lot of work goes into that, so thank you for planning that for us. I just want to remind everyone, we had some great Martin Luther King Junior events that this past couple of weeks. Alpha Phi Alpha had the march as well as the luncheon where they honored our Mayor Pro Tem Brenda Moore, so congratulations to Mayor Pro Tem. And then also Phi Delta Kappa had an event where they honored the Divine Nine Presidents in the Saginaw community, so congratulations to all of those honorees for your community service. I am one of those presidents that was honored and it is a thankless job, so a lot of things that we do and we provide for most organizations are almost a hundred and twenty years old. We just turned a hundred, so we've been in this community for fifty, my organization for fifty-three years, so congratulations to everyone. It is scholarship time, so please, if you have high school seniors, have them look up the Saginaw Community Foundation, there are a lot of scholarships available, so there should be no excuse for you to not have some kind of money in your pocket to go to school. Congratulations to Officer of the Month through the Saginaw Police Department, Officer Jackson. And then I also want to make note that there is free active shooter training February fifteenth at ten AM at St. Mark's, is that correct? Okay. And then last but not least, the Read Association is a very important organization in our community, they're having Books for Breakfast on March fourteenth at nine AM at the Hunger Solutions Centers for three dollars, you can go get all-you-can-eat pancakes. Every child gets a free book and every child's gonna leave with a superhero cape. So that is March fourteenth and hopefully I can see some of my council members there. It has been very busy in the city, but we are progressing, so let's go twenty twenty. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Moore.
Good evening. I'd like to thank all of our public speakers for speaking. And I really like to thank everybody that tunes in at home as well, because you can be doing anything and you guys that are here could be doing anything but sitting up in here with us, so I thank you for that. All of the comments or all of the concerns, they are gonna be referred to the city manager who really gives us a report within two or three days, that's how fast she does his turnaround unless he has a stumbling block, but I'm just saying, just look out to hear from him. Congratulations, Ms. Scheser, from your honors on the Black History, on Black History, I mean, I'm sorry, Martin Luther King. There are a number of activities getting ready to come up in Saginaw on the fifteenth of February, I'm sorry. It is Walk for Warmth and it is sponsored by the Community Action Center. And what happens is, is there are people who need to have their heat bills paid and their income is over poverty, we raise money to help pay for people's heat. We serviced over three hundred and ninety-five families last year and it went from not just the heat bills to also to what we call propane to the out-county people. So, if you're not busy on the fifteenth, we are not walking outdoors this year. This year we are in the Fashion Square Mall and we will be walking in Fashion Square Mall, so anybody who's interested in walking, contact me or you can contact the Center, Community Action Center on Perkins, and we really, really need their help. The goal this year is fifteen thousand, our goal last year was ten thousand, we made twelve, so you know I'm greedy, I took it up three, so I'm really going for twenty. That's how many families that we do need to help, so if you are at all available, please, please, please come and walk with us in the warmth, because next year we might be back outside. So come and walk with us. With that, I pass.
Thank you, Councilmember Beck.
Oh yeah, I don't have much this evening either, but I do want to wish the best of luck to DNS Transportation. It's definitely a much-needed service here in our city that we don't have enough of. And I also want to thank Commissioner Matthews for always supporting the city and trying to do what's right by keeping that animal shelter here in Saginaw. And I do want to take the opportunity to express my absolute disappointment in the way that was rolled out and we do appreciate you standing strong with us. But that's all I have, thank you.
Councilmember Bryant.
All right, well, good evening, everybody, it's been a really active couple of weeks. And of course, with Black History Month kicking off, I had the opportunity to attend a number of community events. Probably the highlight, the absolute highlight would be my one-on-one fireside chat with Dr. Ruth Jones. I know some of you guys were able to attend, I was a little, I can say a little nervous, but Dr. Jones is from NASA and she was the second female only to ever receive a PhD within the state of Alabama. That's amazing. And it was so cool because yesterday we had the NAACP meeting and one of our little boys who was a presenter had a NASA sweatshirt on. And it's like, that's a reality to him now. He can see someone who looks just like him and that has been one of my goals, to try to be active and as present as possible on this council. But it was a great meeting, we had the read-in, and if you don't know what that is, that's celebrating our rich diversity and culture when it comes to literary scholars today. I also had the opportunity to talk about our We Build campaign with Joyce Harvin on Community Connections yesterday, advocacy for the city stops, I think a lot of us up here, it's just in our DNA, we go twenty-four seven. But they had some questions about that, also about the Cement Sky Project, so was able to answer some of those questions. We just have to keep doing what we're doing up here. Collectively, I think we've done a pretty good job, but there's still work that needs to be done, but all in all, it was a great week, so that's all I have.
Councilmember Forbes.
Thank you to all of our guests today. As many of you, I was excited that we were able to hear last week about the hard work our staff has done on the potential recreational marijuana ordinance. I know that many of us have been learning about other cities that have gone before us and I think that we had a really productive conversation at that meeting. I hope that we can ensure that this ordinance allows space for Saginaw residents to invest further in Saginaw and to facilitate development of buildings within the city limits. I look forward to more conversation. I invite residents that missed it to watch that section of the strategic planning session on the city YouTube page and to reach out and let us know what you think. The millages on the ballot in March this year are so very important to the quality of life of the citizens that live here and I look forward to supporting each of them. I want to thank Commissioner Matthews for joining us tonight. I attended the county commissioner meeting last week regarding the topic of animal control and I discussed the safety of volunteers, staff and adopters. I'd like to commend the many law enforcement and community leaders that have helped us greatly reduce crime in the city, particularly downtown, near the location of that Davenport site that has been proposed. There's always more progress to make, but I'm thankful that the county commissioners have collaborated with us on this challenge and celebrated our wins. I trust that judgment for these locations are based on accurate crime statistics, data that I'm sure that we would provide if asked. And I encourage voters to reach out and let their voices be heard to the Board of Commissioners by emailing them at boc@saginawcounty.com. In closing, I just want to be clear, because I feel like I've had a communication challenge this evening. If the city school board or administration is not present at a table about education, then a real conversation about education cannot exist. Our collaboration with this body, along with the county, is essential to all of us moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Austin.
Good evening, everybody, just a couple of things here tonight. It's good to see that we have a full house here tonight. Council chambers was almost full, so thanks for everybody coming out and thanks for everybody that's watching, and I just don't know if that has to do with anything of our good social media campaigns, because I'm always plugging for the city. Please follow us on Facebook, there's a lot of good information there and our staff is doing a great job with that as well. Just a couple of things, I know the clerk didn't have any announcements, but I do want to make something that she's been talking about and I've been also talking about for her, is that she does need poll workers for the upcoming elections, so please give her a call if you're interested and these are papers, she can give you more information about that. I do have a quick question, though, about our absentee ballot, because I'm not sure and I'll just get some clarification. What is our deadline for the absentee ballot? Is it March sixth? Is that the last day?
To obtain them?
Yeah.
It depends on how they obtain them.
Okay, okay, all right, thank you. Thank you for all of our speakers that came out tonight to Commissioner Matthews, I was not able to attend that day due to work constraints, but I did write a letter of support to all the commissioners and I also shared that information on my Facebook page as well, so thank you for coming out tonight and talking to us. Bill, it's always good to see you and thanks for sharing that Stars information for us here and the folks that are watching. And also DNS had no idea about your services in the city, so I also want to say good luck with that business, it goes off to you for taking that initiative here in Saginaw. Mr. Wilson, he has already left the building, but I want to thank him for coming out and just sharing his views with us again, because like Councilwoman Forbes said, we had a good session at our strategic planning for that and there was a lot of good dialogue at the end. Another thing I want to mention about the strategic planning, that if you weren't there and had the opportunity to hear about it, we also had a really good conversation and a presentation by Consumers Energy and they were there to talk about maybe where we would put electric car chargers in the city and the strategic planning of where they would go based on how long you're gonna be in certain areas. And so as an electric car owner myself, that was exciting to see that conversation because that is something that is coming and car companies in the near future will be actually producing all electrical vehicles and their combustion engines will go away. So that was another really good thing from strategic planning that we talked about that day. Let me see, one more thing I had. Marsha Buckman, thank you for coming out and sharing that story with us tonight. I'll be interested in seeing the history on what's happened with that and I'm sure our city staff will be looking into that and sharing that back with the council. Mayor, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Boss.
I'd like to thank all the citizens for showing up for the city council today. I hope that everybody that came here and spoke, that you get your concerns met in a reasonable way to satisfy everybody. I would like to apologize to some of the citizens of the city of Saginaw, especially the landlords, they've been beating me up pretty bad lately about this ordinance and understanding that, you know, that the fees may double if they don't pay up, I think that's a little excessive, too. I'm ashamed that I signed that or agreed with that when it came across, I should have took a better look at that. But it doesn't seem fair, you know, we don't do other fees like that for other entities in the city of Saginaw, why treat the landlords like that? Because we do want them to invest in real estate in our city, so maybe we should take another look at that. Mr. Matthews, I'd like to thank you for showing up. My old childhood, for real, I've been knowing this guy since I was four years old and it's good to see you on the county commissioners and I hope that you, you know, we appreciate you coming here to let us know that you appreciate what we're trying to do for the county with that land. Maybe you guys will come back and get that later, who knows? I too had the opportunity to attend the event at Saginaw Valley with Dr. Jones there, the scientist or whatever she is, I can't remember who she is, but she's a physics, doctors of physics. And by having Clint there as the moderator for the program was really beautiful, I think he might have missed his call and he should be on TV doing some other late-night show or something, but he did an excellent job, excellent job, Clint. Thank you, man, fine job you did. You know, and the lady was here talking about getting involved in STEM, she's a STEM speaker too and she go all over the country talking about it. And I think that's something that we all need to do to get our kids, grandkids, great-grandkids to try to tell them to try to think about careers in the STEM field. I know Ms. Miller know like I know, Angie Miller knows that we really need tradespeople in the city of Saginaw, all over the United States we need trades real bad. You know, I personally retired as a pipe fitter in a plant and they called me back to work because they didn't have people to come back and I retired again. And who knows, I may be working as a pipe fitter again one day, but the thing is that we really need tradesmen real bad in the city of Saginaw and all over the country, so we need to tell our kids to think about other careers besides just getting involved and going to school for business. I had the opportunity, too, to attend another event at Saginaw Valley last week, the Hispanic Leadership Program, and it was an excellent program and most of our city council people was there. And it was really a good event to see that we have professionals that have went to school here- here, then went to leadership, and they stand here in the city of Saginaw and going on with their careers here in the city of Saginaw. So I think that we need to think about doing that in African-American community and other communities to get people to stay here in the city of Saginaw. I wish I had more time, some more comments, but maybe the mayor let me have 15 seconds, too.
No one interrupted you, so we welcome you.
I'd just like everybody to know, to think about Black History Month, please think about the contributions that African-Americans have contributed to this country, from building it up with free labor to maintaining it, and to all the other things that we have done for the country. So think about that.
Thank you. In the interest of brevity, I won't repeat what others have covered already, but I do want to mention that the Martin Luther King March Luncheon was held a couple of weeks ago. And I was able to march and to attend that luncheon. It was a very, very good presentation, and there was a lot of students from both, particularly Delta, there. And it was really, we had a nice sunny day for a cold walk, but it was a great event. Also, the State of Civil Rights presentation was given by the NAACP President Terry Pruitt last week. And that was a very good presentation on what the NAACP has done and their focus in the future on getting out the vote as opposed to just worrying about registration. So that was a very good presentation as well, and also Carl Williams presented as well. And it was good to hear their opinions and thoughts on what needs to be done in the future for equity in our community. I do want to thank the committee, every council member present today for your frank and open discussion on, at the committee as a whole, it was helpful. And I do agree that moving forward, openness and communication is essential, so thank you for the discussion. But that last, I want to thank all the staff members who prepared and planned for and presented the strategic planning session. That was very informative and good for all of us, and gives us some thoughts and ideas on how to move forward in the next year. Some of the discussions or some of the information was very beneficial. I'm sure there will be more progress and more activities brought before council sometime in the next few months regarding some of those presentations, and I'm looking forward to those as well. So thank you to all the staff for the hard work in doing that. And that's all I have. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. We are now reports from the manager.
Thank you. First, I would make a few comments about the non-owner occupied registration. If you recall, that was updated, and part of the reason why we updated it is because the ordinance for vacant properties was, the fee was $150, so it was much more than the non-owner occupied, and also had the punitive measure of the late fee. So NOO ordinance was changed to be the same as the vacant, based upon input from citizens who own vacant property, as well as council members. I believe we did have discussion at council about that. There was comment period on the due date, because that was introduced as an ordinance, so you know, our process is defined as introduced, and then two weeks later approved. So there was, were two meetings that could have been commented by on that, and then the fee schedule comes for approval as well. So there was a lot of time for input. I'd also add that we did ask John Stempel for the city to communicate with the landlords' association, so they were aware of the changes that were going to be coming about, too, and that resulted in a step level of increase. So we did not double the fee or increase it a large amount at once to equal the vacant property registration. So just some additional background on that for the audience, and refresh the memories of some of council if you don't recall that. I'd also like to thank the staff for the strategic planning session, the individuals who did present and prepare the presentations, and the city attorney, Amy Lusk, did the presentation for the potential recreational marijuana ordinances. That was also, a lot of work was put in by Jeff Klopsick for the zoning mapping, and also John Stempel for the planning and zoning input there. And thanks to Vicky Davis and Rachel Hoseeska for the setup and the planning and the logistics, and then also Jeff Klopsick and Max Shuknik for the technical, making sure we had the right tech at the meeting. So we did do video of the first presentation, but as you all know, it's very difficult to get video at our off-site meeting, so thanks to Matt for making that happen. There are always issues with microphones and getting the audio, as well as the video and that, so they did a good job with that. Council members also should have received a copy of the letters, and you may have gotten it at home, because I did for the new lead and copper rules, that was a requirement of the state law, so you have a copy of that in case anyone asks about it. If you have questions about it, contact us. You can contact Phil Carwatt or Paul Reisch, either, they can give you additional information on that. And I believe that it will probably be on TV5 pretty soon here, too. They had made a request for some comments. And then finally, I just wanted to let council and public know that our city treasurer, Heather Pazanow, who has worked with the city, I believe she started working for the city as a part-time employee in Parks and Recreation, maybe when she was even in high school, and she has gone through several positions at the city. So I think it's a great example of how we have opportunities when you work with the city to move up. She works for Lori Brown, who also has held several positions in the city. But Heather recently earned her Certified Public Funds Investment Manager certification, which is a nationally recognized certification program designed to provide the confidence and knowledge to manage investments better, and learn about investment instruments, banks, brokers and advisors, cash flow governance, and investment policy, safety, liquidity, and yield, and defining strategy. And that's through the National Association of Treasurers. So I think it's a great example of how our employees are willing to learn more and help the city, so it's a great example of that, and congratulations to Heather for earning that. And with that, we also have a few presentations, and the first one I wanted to show you, a video that was created by the city clerk and staff here, and it was something that we did talk about at the strategic planning session. It's absentee ballot envelopes video, so I wanted to play that with you first. Oh, that's an abrupt end. Thanks, Janet, that she got a pretty quick turnaround on that video. And then we also have an update this evening on Saginaw Parks. Saginaw Parks Director Brian Leckel is here this evening. He gave us an update, it's probably been at least a year or two since the last time Brian was here, so I wanted to give him an opportunity to talk about some of the projects that they've been working on, and they've been key in some of our projects in the city here, too, since the last millage passed.
Welcome, Mr. Leckel, good to see you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Ms. Mayor Pro Tem, councilwomen and men, Mr. Manager, city staff, appreciate you having me here this evening. I looked through some city minutes, and it was maybe 2016, I thought I saw, but it may have been more recent than that as well. But I'm going to get right into it, because I promised five to eight minutes, and anybody who knows me knows that'll be a bit of a challenge. I have a lot of good news to share, so we'll get right into it. Again, my name's Brian Keenan Leckel, I'm the Director of Saginaw County Parks and Recreation, and I'm here to highlight our operation, and specifically, some partnerships specific to the city of Saginaw and the county collaboration. So first, I just have a quick review. We are a countywide parks department, but we do not own and operate every park in the county. We spend a lot of time, in fact, sending calls your way for city park facilities, or, you know, advocating for various facilities and those kinds of things. But the ones we do operate, I'll just run through very quickly. William H. Haythco Recreation Area with a 40-acre lake, a swimming beach, boat rentals. In Haythco Recreation Area there in Saginaw Township. The Saginaw Valley Rail Trail, 11 and 1/2-mile trail that stretches from St. Charles to Saginaw Township on an abandoned rail corridor, and using some road right-of-way as well. Immerman Memorial Park on M-47 in the Tidewassee River, with our great bark park right out front, as well as boating and fishing access on the Tidewassee and those types of things. Ringwood Forest, beautiful facility, south of St. Charles, off of M-52 on Ring Road. Price Nature Center, five miles south of Saginaw City in Bridgeport Township, located on Sheridan Road. In Veterans Memorial Park, mile and a half of Saginaw River frontage in Zewalki Township on the east side of the river, really on the border of Saginaw and Bay Counties. So those are our six. We've managed and developed these properties, really beginning, we just celebrated 50 years as Parks and Recreation Commission. And these developments, for the most part, took place between 1970 and 1990. And you'll notice, and we're going to talk about, a seventh facility soon to open in the city of Saginaw, but you'll notice none of these six are located within city limits, and due to when we were developing them, that was intentional. During, you know, from the '70s on into the '90s, the city of Saginaw had a fantastic, thriving Parks and Recreation Department with multiple recreation centers, multiple programming staff, sports leagues, all those types of things. So when the county came in looking to develop parks and programs, rather than emulate services, we wanted to spread those facilities around the county. Obviously, things have changed a bit, and that's what I'm here to highlight today, is the county's intentional investment and intentional opportunities of bettering recreation for city of Saginaw residents. So the last time I was here, I shared a quick update on our waiver of gate fees, waiver of gate fees for all Saginaw County residents. At Immerman Memorial, we had a $2 per vehicle gate fee. At Haythco Recreation Area, $5 a gate fee. Beginning in 2016, we started handing out these color-coded Recreate Saginaw County Parks passes. Your first time through the gates, a booth attendant, one of our 35 seasonal staff positions at Immerman and Haythco, would give you one of these color-coded stickers, welcome you to the park, answer any questions you might have with a smile, and send you on your way to enjoy some wonderful recreation on that day. So again, these have, oh, I should also mention, we're accepting seasonal staff applications. We hire about 35 seasonal employees, taking those through the end of February. You can apply online, saginawcounty.com/parks. 35 seasonal staff, again, booth attendants, park rangers, office clerks, program coordinators, and more. So those are a few of the opportunities we have. We started handing these out in 2016. Admittedly, 2015, our last summer of charging gate fees, was a cooler, rainier start to the summer, much like we had this year. But that summer, while charging gate fees between Immerman and Haythco, this is a little tough to read, but we had 7,300 vehicle entries and 25,000 patrons between Immerman and Haythco between Memorial Day and Labor Day that summer. 25,000 patrons, 7,300 vehicles. Last summer, 2019, we had 24,000 vehicle entries and almost 84,000 patrons visit Immerman and Haythco. We knew gate fees were a barrier, we knew our park usage was going to increase, I don't think we anticipated quite this much. It's extremely exciting, it's great to see. Instead of a once-a-month visit to Haythco, or a once-a-week, it's once-a-week or a few times a week. We're seeing folks come out, enjoy the parks, and enjoy lunch there, and stop by much more frequently, and we love to see that. I mentioned the color-coded Parks passes. We also, that also allows us the ability to identify where in the county folks are traveling from. So unsurprisingly, our two largest population groups within the county, Saginaw Township and the city of Saginaw, are our two largest user groups. So this is reflective of 2019. You'll see orange on this pie is representative of the city of Saginaw, 8,500 vehicle entries, almost 30,000 patrons in our parks. And again, this is just between Memorial Day and Labor Day, and really, our booth attendant is there from about 11 to 7. So we're not catching those early morning folks or even evening parties, but during those core hours of the summer months, 36% city of Saginaw zip codes coming through the gates. Saginaw Township next, at 33, and then we kind of group the rest by area of the county, Carlton, Freeland, kind of that northern portion, and then we have the western-bound Thomas Township, Hemlock, Merrill. We go south along Dixie for the Blue Section, and so those are all coordinated and counted by those booth attendant seasonal staff. But again, just a tremendous increase in park usage, and I like to reflect on that only because Saginaw has a, you know, we've been identified as an unhealthy community, and getting folks back out into parks more frequently certainly can contribute to that, not just physical health, but certainly mental health as well. I've been getting a Facebook ad about forest bathing, anybody else had that one? No, okay, got it. Just the parks guy, got it, okay. While this was happening, we've also contributed, and within our budget, we have the ability to match our own grant opportunities and those around the county, and we've had some specific involvements in this regard in the city, including the Saginaw Bike Rack Project. You may have seen some of these around the city. There's currently 40 of them, with 40 more coming. That was a $7,000 Saginaw Community Foundation grant with a match from Saginaw County Parks of seven grand. We also have a small maintenance fund to powder coat these down the road or replace them as they're potentially damaged, that kind of thing. But those are our place throughout downtown Old Town, all of the Housing Commission sites, and in a few other locations as well. About three years ago, we applied for and received what was called Iron Bell Round Two Grant Funding, specific to the Iron Bell Trail corridors. The county received 21,000 in funding. We paired that with city of Saginaw funding of 23,000, and we had some engineered plans done for a trail project, Iron Bell Trail project at Wick's Park. So there's been some engineering done, and in the future, those plans can be utilized to help that development in that park area. Staying in Wick's Park, canoe kayak launch, which was installed this September. We wanted it earlier, but the water levels didn't allow, but a beautiful facility there, canoe kayak launch. Saginaw County Art Department wrote a grant to the Saginaw Bay Watershed Initiative Network on the city's behalf, which procured an additional $20,000 in funding that went to the community foundation and helped facilitate that project. You'll see in the photo, a gentleman's out there fishing on it. It's also can double as a fishing pier, but I've also personally seen both canoes and kayaks utilizing that, and that'll be installed each summer. And in fact, county staff helped and assisted with city, a nice partnership to get that in and out of the water. Provided funding, $25,000 for the fitness court across from YMCA in Celebration Park. That is about 90% complete, beautiful state-of-the-art facility, which we look forward to celebrating a ribbon-cutting for in April, as I understand. Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund, I know most of you are familiar with that. It's a great opportunity for municipalities looking to acquire or develop park areas. A lot of times, these are, it's a great program, but it's also highly competitive, so you have to really tailor your grant to score the most points possible. That means a lot of times, you're not able to include everything you wish to have done in a grant, but really tailor it to the project. The county partnered with the city and provided $105,000 in matching funds, paired with the city's funding on that almost $600,000 project, to help renovate restrooms, dressing room facilities, and add that beautiful trail on Ojibwe Island, a gem in the city, and certainly a regional park as well, with, you know, thousands of folks coming to attend events there annually. We also lead our own programming across the county, including specifically in city of Saginaw Parks. This is our third year, this was our third year of offering these playdate-style programs in Otto Rosser Park, Veterans McKinney, Fordney Park, Bliss Park, Dindorfer Woods, and Hoyt Park. One-hour, hour-and-a-half playdate-style programs. They became so popular, led us to developing a mobile recreation unit, you can see in the photo up there. We keep all of our program supplies right in there. There's participation numbers right there, and you can see a nice steady increase from our first summer of having maybe 10 or 15 per playdate, to this summer having 50-plus per playdate, which is extremely per playdate, which is extremely exciting. I'm just gonna show a few photos of those, you can see a better photo of the mobile recreation unit with a nice colorful panel on it. This is our inflatable Gaga Pit, wildly popular. We first got it five years ago, we had to facilitate a lot of the programs, now we bring it out to Ojibwe Island for Light Up the City, and this young man in the lower-right corner there facilitated the whole thing for an hour and a half straight, never left the Gaga Pit, explained all the rules to the kids. It was really, really neat, really exciting, and a fun game that you may see on elementary playgrounds, et cetera. So that's one of our playdate programs that we offer. City Fire Department has come out and done a little community engagement of their own and coming out and participating in some of these, and we do, Fordney Park is right behind their station, but this is actually Otto Rossar, so they'll follow us when they don't have a call going on. We think that's pretty neat, of course, the kids do as well. So Gaga Balls, supersize the fun, we have some large games that we play, simple imaginative programs like building towers with buckets and foam, and that kind of thing is what you see happening in some of these neighborhood parks. And the really neat thing, this is Vets Memorial, more supersize the fun, when we have 50 or even this summer, we had over 100 people at Fordney Park. When was the last time that happened, over 100 people in Fordney Park? The coolest thing, I think, especially at Otto Rossar and others, we might have 50 people there, but there's only 10 vehicles, which means folks are walking from their homes to their neighborhood parks and participating in programs. And we think that's kind of an underlying, really special thing that's happening through this partnership. So we've offered programs, this is a new one this summer, Music on the Move, a partnership with Major Chords for Minors, this is at Dindorfer Woods, a good 30 kids participating there. Hoyt Park Youth Baseball League, about four years ago, Larry Breathour came to me, and if you know Larry, you can't say no, but there was a need. The Friends of Hoyt Park could no longer facilitate this growing baseball league, coaches, scheduling, all those kinds of things, they needed some support, and so we saw a need there, and we came in, we stepped in, we helped facilitate. Last summer, we had 24 teams, 290 participants, Tuesday and Thursday nights at Hoyt Park in the summertime. You can see the backdrop there, this is one of my favorite photos, but, I mean, Hoyt Park just packed on Tuesday and Thursday nights with folks playing baseball again. And that's, you know, major credit to Friends of Hoyt Park and the city for everything they've done there, but certainly, we've had a role the last four years now as well. We also offer a variety of other programs in our own parks and across the county, Dog Team Defense, Soggy Doggy, Halloween. This is an inflatable movie screen we purchased five years ago. It's 18 feet tall, 24-foot screen, we've had it down for Lawn Chair Film Fest. We partner each year with the Saginaw Children's Zoo, Zoo V Night. Also, we had this summer at Hoyt, on our last baseball night, we showed the Sandlot. There was a makeup game at 10:00 PM, dark, lights on, baseball happening, Sandlot playing, it was pretty neat, pretty neat. So those are some of the program efforts. The one thing I really wanted to leave time for, which I probably didn't, but I want to highlight certainly, is our county park development within the City of Saginaw. I think most folks have heard about it, but I want to share just a couple plans, and it's the former Malleable Iron property in southwest Saginaw, a half-mile of Saginaw River frontage, a 332-acre facility. I show here a $1.6 million investment. That is after the investment that, through the GM bankruptcy and the creation of Racer Trust, $9 million in funding was assigned in remedial dollars to that site. $5 million has been spent to date cleaning up that property, remediating with the EPA and the DEQ Eagle, and creating a safe space for passive recreation. So not your traditional park with ball, diamonds, and playgrounds, but an opportunity to hike and bike and interact with nature, which you'll see in a bit. The additional $1.6 million includes two state-funded trust fund grants. The state acquired the property in October and has since leased it to Saginaw County. They also applied for two Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund Grants totaling roughly $600,000. We're in the process of implementing those currently. A million dollars from the Dow settlement has also been assigned to this property, $750,000 of which will be set aside into a maintenance endowment to forever protect this area. And it's an absolutely beautiful piece of property. You can see its importance here on a larger city view map, that last corridor of green space before we transitioned into the city, and when you're out there, it doesn't feel like a former Malleable Iron factory, and I think that's important to share in just a couple photos from on top of a 20-acre, 85-foot-tall landfill looking south over the wetlands, a remediated cut off the Saginaw River there, and there's also a 20-acre lake just before the landfill, so just a few photos there. Opportunities to interact with wildlife, these are a few photos that we have just in the past couple of months, having taken ownership of the property through a lease agreement with the Michigan DNR. But again, literal herds of deer out there, and if you're, if you live in the city like I do, you don't see deer very often, so the opportunity to get out there and connect with nature and spend some time in an absolutely beautiful corridor, we think's important. And again, one of those needs, one of those niches that we thought we had the capacity to fulfill, to attract some investment into the city, and really bring back to life a corridor where literally thousands and thousands of Saginaw residents had their careers, you know, raised families with monies that were made at these factories, but now allowing the public to interact with it in a different and safe way, we think's gonna be pretty cool. So, there's five years in a maybe 10-minute, I went a little over, I think, but I don't know if the opportunity for questions is here or not, but I'm happy to answer any if there are.
Yes, Councilmember Ball.
Comments and questions? I'd like to thank you for the work that you're doing, I think you're doing an excellent job with the Saginaw County Parks and Recreation Division. But I was wondering, maybe you can get, think about getting Delphi to invest some money in there, since they had their plant, two used to be there, now it used to be the old gun plant. And I think maybe we should get a plaque there to let them know what they did, you know, when they was making machine guns, back in the day.
Absolutely, so two things. First, I didn't mention passive recreation, it will also include what's known as interpretive signage in the industry, so an interpretive timeline from the site, natural uses, there are actually coal mines on that property through lumbering uses, and then into 90 years of factory, including exactly the gun plant, which is historic. Delphi specifically, the parcels are still separated and owned and being remediated by Delphi, but once, you know, I can't speak for the DNR, but once those are remediated and could potentially be included, it would certainly be something we would welcome as the county to bring in that land as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any others? Mayor Protem?
Is this a wolf?
It is a coyote. It is a, it is. It's a coyote.
Yes, I did, I zeroed in on a four-legged creature.
It is a coyote, and it's quite a large one, actually. There's a few on the property. They would mostly target small game and do not like people, and so once the public, you know, does start activating that site and utilizing it a little bit more, you likely won't see the coyotes, or certainly not during daylight hours when the park will be open, but it is quite a large one, and I have actually seen a coyote at the end of my driveway in Adams Boulevard, so they do wander into the city on occasion.
Don't tell him.
You don't have to tell me, all you gotta do is come in my neighborhood. We got lions and tigers and bears in my neighborhood.
Are the councilmembers?
I just wanted to say thank you, Brian, we've had the chance to work together, I've served on the Parks Board, and you serve on our Riverfront Development Commission, and you're a phenomenal advocate and a wealth of knowledge for the city. So thank you so much for the work you do, I know it's not always easy, but it's appreciated.
Thanks, sir.
I have, councilmember?
Yeah, just real quick, and Brian, we've been friends for years and go back, and I was excited when you got this position, but to see you in this position and see everything that you've done for the last few years for the city, the Free Parks was just huge, I think, and even one that took place even at the park off the expressway, you just saw a lot of people participating more and going to the beach and stuff, and I've actually used the park myself prior to that, so thanks again, your energy is great, and look forward to more stuff, and thanks for the presentation tonight, including the coyote for Mayor Protem.
No, I didn't have a question, you talking about the coyote still.
All right, I do have one follow-up. You mentioned the employment opportunities, you said 35 jobs?
That's correct.
And when is the application deadline?
February 28th is the current deadline, based on our number of applicants, we may extend, but February 28th, saginawcounty.com/parks, online application portal, you can certainly get hard copies in the courthouse in our office there in the basement, but an online application is fairly simple.
Saginawcountyparks.com?
Excuse me, saginawcounty.com/parks.
Thank you. All right, thank you so much, it was a wonderful presentation, we appreciate everything you are doing for the city, thank you, Brian.
Thanks.
Thank you, Brian, and that concludes the management update.
All right, Madam Clerk.
Mayor, we are now at the consent agenda.
The consent agenda has been available at City Hall, on the city website, and SGTV Channel 191. Are there any exceptions to be noted by the clerk? Councilmember Balls.
I'd like to get some information about number seven.
So you want to accept number seven, all right. Any other exceptions? Councilmember Astash?
Just want to get some more information on item number three.
All right, item number three, any other exceptions? Any other exceptions? Hearing none, I would ask for a motion regarding approval of items one and two, four, five, and six, and eight and nine.
So, support.
It has been moved to support, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is carried, thank you. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, our first exception is item number three, approve the addendum to the professional services agreement with Saginaw Future Incorporated for $25,000 for professional planning services. That's Councilman Astash.
Thank you. Yeah, if I could just get a, just a little bit more clarification on what these services are, maybe how we came to that dollar amount, I know we do a lot of work with Saginaw Futures and they help us out a lot, but it was just kind of real general, and it sounded like there's some more activity with Old Town and downtown projects that have been going on.
Yeah, it's primarily what Cassie Miller works on for us, but John gives some details.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Tim is correct, it is the work that Cassie Miller is doing for us for the past year or so, she's been serving as our staff person on the Planning Commission, Zoning Board of Appeals, and the Historic District Commission. We did recently hire a city planner, in fact, he is with us tonight, Bob, if you wouldn't mind standing up, Bob Goleen is our new city planner. So Bob's main focus initially is going to be the update of the master plan, among other plans that we have. In the meantime, Cassie Miller is going to continue to work on still staffing those boards and commissions and dealing with certain items that come up from the public, if you will, so that Bob can have the chance to do a good job with the master plans, so we can complete that work by the end of the year.
Okay.
Is there a motion?
A motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Support.
It's been moved and supported, is there any discussion? This is on item three, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is carried. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor, item number seven, approve the purchase with purchase with TKS Security for $13,800 for locksmith work within the City Hall for the Facilities Division. Councilmember Balls.
Yeah, what are we, you gonna change all the locks there, or what do you do? So what we're doing is, if you probably can't remember this, but back in July 8th, council meeting, we approved an agreement with Johnson Controls to upgrade our existing door access security system, it's pretty old and needed to be updated, so for like City Hall, Public Works, and I think there was another building, we took, went out and got bids to change all that out, but in the meantime, that didn't approve any additional security measures to, the lower level of City Hall, for the most part, isn't as secure as we'd like it to be, so as part of the original bid, that upgrading that access system wasn't part of it, so we're pretty much wanna lock them doors down to both public, if public's coming in, or even city employees, just for security reasons. So we asked for a proposal from Johnson Controls, which council approved on October 21st, to add that to their already existing bid, well, we left off the locksmith services that are required, because they gotta change out a lot of the door hardware, and you know, we gotta be able to have a lockout key, so like, city staff will be able to, because the way it's gonna be is probably similar to the county, certain doors, if you go out and alarm's gonna go out and audible, to make us aware that somebody either came in or went out one of them doors, but we're for the most part gonna keep them locked down, and you're gonna have to get out them for emergency situations, but this additional item is to, you know, upgrade the hardware systems and that for the door to be compatible with the access card reader systems.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Balls, is there a motion?
Yes, sir, it is, to approve.
All right, it's been moved and supported to approve item seven, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is carried, thank you. Madam Clerk?
We are now at Boards, Commissions, and Committee Reports.
All right, are there any Boards, Commissions, or Committee Reports at this time? Anybody?
For Saginaw Economic Development Corporation, I just want to remind everyone, if you are interested in entrepreneur, please, there is money available for you to start your business. There are things you need to do, but there's some funding out there that can help you, but also Saginaw Soup has been kicked off and great things are going on, so check out the City of Saginaw website for, and in the Facebook page for upcoming events for Saginaw Soup.
All right, thank you. Any other Boards or Commissions reports? Any others? Hearing none, Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. That takes us to appointment of Board and Commission Members, we do have one tonight, and it's to approve the manager's reappointment of Don Goodrow to the Downtown Development Authority for the resident position with a term to expire December 31st, 2023.
I have a motion.
Do you need a motion?
Yes, we do. We have a motion.
Some move.
Is there a second?
Or?
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is carried.
Mayor, we are at ordinance introduction. Our first one is to amend the official city map to rezone the east half of Lot 6, Block 24, Poinier Farm, City of Saginaw, from RO1 Restricted Office to B1 Local Business.
Is there a motion to introduce?
Motion to introduce the ordinance.
Is there a second?
Support.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none? I'm sorry, yes, go ahead.
This would apply to all three of these.
Oh, the question applies to all three?
Yes.
Okay.
I was curious, looking at the map of this, if this is mostly to conform what the zoning is to what is there already. Are these existing as either, I forget the exact term, approved uses off of its current zoning, kind of via grandfathered ins to what they're doing?
Yes, currently, well, but two things, there are existing businesses that are located there that are non-conforming, as well as some vacant land from properties that had structures that were demolished, and there has been some interest in that area to add additional development to those existing businesses, and so we're trying to get that zoning lined up with what's actually there going on.
Thank you, Jim. Councilmember Astash?
Yeah, just a comment too, thanks for clarifying that, because as I went online and looked at the area, and I kind of figured that's what was going on, because there's a store and the machine, or car repair.
Correct, yep.
Councilman Balls?
No, he doesn't answer my question.
Any other questions or comments or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is carried. Madam Clerk?
Would you want to announce that the ordinance is laid over?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, the ordinance shall be laid over under the Charter provision.
Thank you, our second ordinance is to amend the official city map to rezone the east half of Lot 1, the east half of Lot 2, Block 9, Poinier Farm, City of Saginaw, from RO1 Restricted Office to B1 Local Business.
Is there a motion to introduce?
Move to introduce the ordinance.
Support. It's been moved and supported, any further discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It will be laid over under the Charter provision.
Our third ordinance tonight is to amend the official city map to rezone the west half of Lot 1, extending west 20 feet, west half of Lot 2, Block 9 of Poinier Farm, City of Saginaw, from RO1 Restricted Office to B1 Local Business.
Before we, I believe the EXC is excluding, is what that normally means?
Oh, I was saying extending, deny.
It should be excluding the west 20 feet.
Wasn't sure of the abbreviation, that's why I paused.
Okay. Is there a motion to introduce?
Move to introduce that ordinance.
Support.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Councilmember?
Yeah, just a quick comment too, for the citizens watching at home and for the audience Yeah, just a quick comment too for the citizens watching at home and for the audience here on these ordinance introductions, that this is all within the same block of Genesee.
Yes. Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carried. It will be laid over under the charter provision as well.
Mayor, that takes us to resolutions. We have one this evening, and it's approving the issuance of hospital revenue and revenue refunding bonds by the city of Saginaw Hospital Finance Authority for the benefit of Covenant Medical Center Incorporated.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Some move.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is carried. Madam Clerk.
We are now at miscellaneous business.
Are there, is there any other business? Yes, Mayor Protop.
I know that the audience does not have, we are rarely emphasizing the census count. Be counted. We're having an ice cream social. I said, me and Michael Webster is the county representative, I'm the city representative, and we're getting ready to plan a big ice cream social, and if we get fifty-six new people, that means that we've invested a million dollars into our city. And so, for those who are not my friends, that want to be my friend, we're going to have ice cream social. More will be announced about the ice cream social, but for real, everybody, be counted. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Miller?
Yes, I have two short items. I wanted to ask the manager slash clerk, the absentee voter video, is that going to be available as like a PSA on local TV?
It's on our YouTube channel right now, and I assume it probably would be in rotation under SGTV.
And I want to correct myself, I did have a report from the Brownfield Development Authority. We had our first meeting in the year, and it was mainly organizational. We elected our officers and took care of the housekeeping business.
All right. Yes, Councilmember Ostash.
Yeah, just a couple things on a miscellaneous business. The manager talked tonight about the mail-in, top of rules, and just want to let the citizens at home know that there's information on the city website about this. If you scroll down to the bottom, there's actually a whole section, and then if you have any questions, please call the city and get those questions taken care of. And then you also mentioned there's going to be some more information come out on that too. So hopefully that'll clear some of the questions that we've already started to see arise in the social media setting. And also, I'm just going to go back to something that I mentioned during council input earlier, because I don't want to cause any confusion with our absentee ballot that I was making reference to, because I didn't know if there was like a, to mail it in, of course, you